This is.
Yeah, your honor.
Okay. The regular meeting of the city council and the Needles Public Utility Authority for the City of Needles on Tuesday, March 22, 2022. Executive session will begin shortly. The mayor and council members may be attending via Microsoft Teams. The public may also attend via Teams. If asked, do the following information for access to Teams. Call or no call?
Councilmember Campbell, President Evans.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Thank you.
Resess the city council meeting and convene a joint council/NPUA meeting. Call or no call has previously been taken. Public comments pertaining to the executive session item. Resess to executive session. I see no public comment. Dave?
Executive session number A. Conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Agency negotiator, city manager Rick Daniels or his designee. Negotiating parties are the City of Needles as a potential seller and the Needles Church of Christ, Inc. as a potential buyer. The property described is generally located on the section of right-of-way on O Street, south of Market Street and terminating at the I-40. Under negotiations are the price and terms.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The next two items that are on the agenda. Item B and C involve cannabis. We won't have a forum for that executive session.
Thank you.
I would be recusing myself on those two items, your honor.
Public regular meeting of the city council and Needles Public Utility Authority. Executive session was held at 5:00 PM. Prepare for the executive session. City attorney?
The council met and closed session on item A. Conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Agency negotiator, city manager Rick Daniels or his designee. The negotiating parties, the City of Needles as a potential seller and the Needles Church of Christ, Inc. as a potential buyer of the property described is generally located on the section of the right-of-way on O Street, south of Market Street and terminating at the I-40. Under negotiation or price and terms, there was no reportable action taken. And that's the only item covered close to my session.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell, President Evans. Merritt.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand with me while I'm giving a location and remain standing while Councilmember Longacre leads us in the pledge of allegiance. Our Father in heaven blesses town and its citizens. Guide our council and city staff in their judgments and declarations. And bless all those who travel those dozer highways. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ready, again. I pledge the witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its sins, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The, uh, uh, two councilmen, uh, mailings and councilmember Bell have asked for an excused absence. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Longacre, seconded by councilmember Merritt.
Councilmember Campbell? Yes. Evans? Merritt?
Yes.
Thank you.
As a courtesy of those who have asked, the cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Public comments pertaining to the NPUA council item, a three-minute timeline, has been established. Do you have any public comments? Please.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. Sylvia Malletti, Finance Department, City of Needles. This evening, we have the presentation of the fiscal year ending June 30, 21, NPUA audit. It is being presented this evening by Dave Berger of Berger &amp; Comer, PC. And Dave, can you please start? Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Will you? Okay. I, I got the message that I have 10 minutes to present, so that's great for me. I'll keep it to 10 minutes. There is a PDF file of 11 pages, which is a summary for the audit results. I don't know if you have that in front of you. But if you do, on page four of 11, it just gives the scope of the engagement, which is an audit of the Needles Public Utility Authority conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, also known as a yellow book audit. So it's, you know, audit of the financial statements, but also some work on internal controls and compliance. Not enough work on internal controls to give an opinion, but there is a separate report that is issued on internal control and compliance. On page five of 11, so it's just headers for what's going to follow. Page six of 11, we have what we call an unmodified opinion. That is a clean opinion, which means that the, you know, the financial statements are presented fairly. We do have, like, you know, statement of financial position, which is like a balance sheet, and the results of operations, like an income statement, statement of cash flows. Now, we did assist City of Needles in getting the financial statements and footnotes and schedules together. There is something called Management's Discussion and Analysis, MDNA. That is prepared entirely by NPUA staff or city staff, since the city manages it. And we just have to point that out because, you know, it's an independence consideration. There's only so far that we can go as auditors with this process. As long as somebody at NPUA with, you know, appropriate experience oversees this process, then we're, we're still considered to be independent. On page seven of 11, there, there is a separate report, as I mentioned, on internal controls and compliance. It's required by government auditing standards. Just want to point out here that we did not discover any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses as they are defined, and no non-compliance that was material to the financial statements. So that is also, you know, a clean report. Next page, page eight of 11. What are the significant audit areas that we looked at? You know, it's based on the composition of the, the financial statements, the balances, the volume of transactions. Of course, we look at cash and receivables. Capital assets are very major for NPUA. I did actually propose an adjusting entry to set up a bigger allowance for doubtful accounts. You know, we kind of dug into the aging of the receivables. I think there's more digging that can be done, but we got a reasonable allowance onto the financial statements. In the liabilities, you know, the big liabilities, of course, the purchase obligation and the bonds payable, those are, at this point, fairly routine. You know, we have expectations about the amortization of those balances, and, you know, it's pretty much in line with our expectations. Expenses, the electric power purchased. We actually, you know, we did a presentation for NPUA board a little while ago, and there was a lot of discussion about the cost of electric power purchased because subsequently it's kind of gone crazy. Going from a $2.5 million annual expectation to, you know, at first it was 4.6, and then I think it jumped all the way up to $8 million. So that's, you know, something that everybody has to wrestle with. How, how is the NPUA going to make adjustments so that they're not losing a bunch of money because of the cost of power being purchased? On page nine of 11, I, I carried forward from last year. There was contemplation of issuing bonds to fund some water projects. One of the items that came up in the discussion with NPUA is that the wastewater fund still has a deficit. I think we, we looked at the gap between revenues and expenses. I, shoot, I don't recall off the top of my head. I think it was like, for the year, maybe $287,000 shortage. And so, you know, if, if NPUA, if NPUA is going to eliminate the problem, then got to find a way to either reduce expenses by 287 or increase revenues by 287, and you'd come to a break-even point. There was, for 2021, there was a, what we call a capital contribution. And essentially, that was just moving some property and equipment off of the city's books onto NPUA's books. There's been, you know, I want to say there's been recording on both sides over the years, and it does lead to confusion. The city has funds 502, 503, 506, and 580 that deal with NPUA. Well, 501 and 900 are actually NPUA. And, you know, an item would be in the budget, capital expenditures on the city side, and would be purchased. It, it does have to turn into a fixed asset at the citywide financial statement level, and depreciate it. But if it's an NPUA fixed asset, then it should be recorded as a fixed asset at NPUA. So there was the adjustment made in 2021 to hopefully make it a little less confusing who has the assets and who's depreciating them. The last page of the presentation, these are the elements of the required communications that we have to give to the people that are charged with governance of the entity. So there, there's, there's always new accounting pronouncements that are coming out from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. We do detail them in the footnotes to the financial statements. So the people in finance at the city and NPUA are aware of these. If, if something major is coming down the pike that's going to change the financial statements, then, you know, hopefully, we will discuss before the end of the year that it's effective for. We'll discuss it with the finance people so any required changes of financial statements can get made. We didn't have any difficulties or disagreements. We believe the accounting policies are appropriate and consistently applied. We didn't notice significant or unusual transactions, you know, that are, that are not part of the normal operation of NPUA. Again, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses or irregularities, fraud or illegal acts. And any adjustment that we thought was needed was actually posted. So that's the, you know, just basically the summary presentation without really going into any numbers. And I think I'm right around my 10-minute mark.
Thank you, David. Do you have any questions for Dave?
Mr. Mayor, just one comment on the, on the wastewater side. We have strictly limited spending to push that back in line. So we shouldn't, I mean, we won't have. But I just want to thank Sylvia for her work for, again, the eighth year in a row, no material weaknesses, and the documents fairly and accurately reflect the financial condition of the NPUA. Those are, that's the gold standard in the audit. So, thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. And just a couple, a comment or two on the wastewater issue. We had a meeting right away, and we are addressing the matter strategically. So that is being handled. And also a comment on Dave's fixed asset comment. As you know, and as was approved by you last year, we had a fixed asset study completed. We have done a major overhaul of our fixed asset posting and system at the city. So that was the result of that entry that required the correct posting, because we do have those operating funds on the city side that just need to be reclassed at the end of the year. So any questions for Dave or for myself?
Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Berger.
That was easy.
Thank you, Dave.
I'm looking forward to maybe getting back out to the mainland. It's been two years.
Wow.
We look forward to seeing you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number two, Chamber of Commerce, El Garza's visitor center update. Is Steve?
Good afternoon, and thank you again for allowing me to attend. Honorable Mayor Pageant, Members of the City Council, City Manager Daniels. I'm, I'm Steve Cropsey. I'm the project manager for the tenant improvement project of the Chamber, Needles Area, Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also a silent award winner for the worst golfer on the Pageant golf team at the Eagles tournament last week. When I last reported, we had just begun to frame the building, uh, frame the interior walls. And are, is this on a, are this automatically going to change, or do I have to do something to change? Okay, thank you. You can roll it through whenever you want. I, now, I'm going to jump ahead a bit. Today, we reached a milestone because all of the systems, the rough-in systems, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, insulation, were signed off by the city's building inspector. So you can see progress pictures here of the project as we go along. Today, the city's building inspector, as I said, signed off, and he has been extremely cooperative to work with. He's answered questions that I've had, especially those pertaining to local, local concerns of the building inspector and the building official. The next inspection, as you scroll, as we scroll through these pictures, you're going to see this is sheet rock that's been put on the perimeter walls. And we had to do that in order to, you know, to insulate walls, because obviously you have to have one side to hold the insulation, the friction-fit insulation. So if you want to scroll ahead, this is a picture of a River Valley air conditioning person working to put the air handler and the heat pump in. Again, another shot of sheet rock in place. I was fortunate, I asked for a meeting with Mr. Terron of 66 Broadband, because we're going to button up the walls pretty quick, and I asked for his input as to what appropriate port places would be. And he graciously came to the site, and we walked the site and spent 30 or 40 minutes looking at places for data ports, TV reception areas and things, TV receptacles and things like that. So I appreciated that very much. You'll scroll through. This is the, this is the El Garza side of the, of the building, the perimeter, outside of the perimeter wall. This is the air handler, which is being suspended from the girders of the building. It lifted into place. It weighs about 250 pounds. It was a chore for River Valley air conditioning to get that up there. This is the plumbing, rough-in. And this, again, is River Valley putting in the condensation, or the refrigerant lines for the air handler. Another shot prior to doing any, any sheet rock. The electrician pulling wire and conduit. This is a happy day, the sheet rock arrived. Somebody commented that they'd never been excited about seeing this truckload of sheet rock before. This is some of the duct work that River Valley put in. The date on, the dates on this one, as you can see, was the 21st last week. This is, uh, this was accomplished on Monday. The insulation went in on all the perimeter walls and the demising wall between the conference room and the rest of the space, and also, of course, on the plumbing wall. Just another shot of insulation. I'm sorry. Is that the end of the photos? Okay, thank you very much. And again, I appreciate all the cooperation that I've received and, and the input we've received. The next inspection will be drywall nailing inspection. And once that's done, then we're working from the top down. We do a T-bar ceiling like this and start dropping the lights and the electrical, I mean, the lights and the electrical through the top into, of course, into the wall with conduit. But anyway, that's our next inspection, drywall nailing. I expect that to happen next week, and probably by your next council meeting, we'll have the walls painted. But I don't want to look ahead that far. You never know. I, I, somebody will ask me, what, how's it going? And I say, well, if God willing and the creek don't rise, we're going to get to this point. And so, God willing and the creek don't rise, we'll be painting in about two weeks. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. Oh, by the way, here's a, this is a display item I have. It's the, it's the inspection sheet signed off today so that we've got all of the rough ends done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Cropsey. Resess the joint NPUA council meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Public appearance pursuant pursuant to the rest of the city council on subjects other scheduled are requested, need so at this time. We're called by the vice mayor. Please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code, Section 54950 prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Any public appearance?
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, or after any, any public comments, we do need an action to accept the audit result.
All right. But, you know, we have accepted it, so I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to accept.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell, seconded by Councilmember Longacre. Call for a vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. See, public appearance? See no public appearance, so go on. I would highly notice to consider all evidence and test my foe against raising certain fees at the Rivers Edge Golf Course. Staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Over the last year, JJ is joining us from his van. JJ, you're on the screen. You're in the council chambers. But anyway, we had, we've experienced some increases, too, that I'll bring your attention to, is last year, our seed, right grass seed cost, the overseed increased $30,000, which was up from 50. Candidly, we consider ourselves lucky to get any at that time. And then the new carts and the new added expense of $65,000, so about $95,000 of increase. So while we are seeing an increase in play and in revenue, we are coming forward with a request to increase the daily fee or the per round fee by $3. That would make our rates $40, would make FuCon, in comparison to our competitors, $49 for Mojave Golf Resort, it's $59. El Rio Golf Club is $55. Las Lagos is 52, and Laughlin Ranch is 85. Now, you're able to get from the golfing customers revenue based upon their value of the golf experience. We are a municipal course. We will always be a municipal course, and the, for example, the Laughlin Ranch is a high-end, nearly hump Coachella Valley quality course. Ours is not that shape, but it is getting much better. This is one of the better overseeds we've had, and we're doing the best with what we have. And I'll have some news later on in the meeting. So our recommendation is, we can recover just on the cost increase of $3. We can capture 55,000 of that $95,000 cost increase. And then JJ has assured me that he will attract another $40,000 of increased play at the site. And that includes the carts, because we're able to get three turns of those carts rather than in the past with the old carts, we were lucky to get one. So we're able to, before they need recharge. So we're able to get, before we were having to turn people off, turn people away, because we, we didn't have access to carts that were charged up. That is significantly unchanged. So to me, to be able to increase by the number of players, coupled with this increase and the improved condition of the course and the carts, that we should be able to make up the other 40,000. Our recommendation would be to, to approve. And JJ's available from San Diego.
I heard that, I heard that tournament right away. Go ahead. Did, did his tournament go real well, this, this last tournament he had?
JJ went amazing.
Yeah, I heard it was a good turnout. Great.
Yeah, so that, that's just one of the examples that Rick mentioned was having a tournament like we did on Saturday. We never would have been able to do that two months ago now. We had a 250-player day on that Friday before, and we were burning carts all day long. And that's why you need golf carts, is to have days like that. And with that added expense and with the improvement of the golf course and the added expenses, this is why I didn't come to you first when I first started, was I wasn't comfortable increasing the rates. And now I am more than comfortable increasing the rates, because we are easily a $40 golf course now, if not more. So we are always going to be the value in the Tri-Sid area. I am comfortable with that. We are municipal golf. Uh, we are a municipal golf course, but that being said, we are seeing improvements and there is no reason why this rate increase in my mind shouldn't be approved. So I am open to questions from any of you on, uh, any concerns you have. Um, so I am always an open door. So anything you have to ask me, uh, please feel free.
Your honor.
Yes.
How is, um, the project of reseeding and keeping our golf cart green? Is that working for you? Is that moving along okay? Is there anything that we need to do to help you to make our golf course to, um, beautiful?
So the big issue, it always has been, um, and I had some bad news the other day, is irrigation. So, um, with irrigation, we currently have, obviously it is, uh, it is somewhat of a setback to do what you need to do to have an overseeded golf course. And I haven't lost hope because we are going to re-enter the application in a couple of weeks. And I still have hope on this. Um, but that being said, uh, there is always a way, um, in my mind, I have always had limitations at any course I've had. And that's never an excuse. Um, so I am hoping, still having hope on this, um, on this grant money through the state. But if not, and if it doesn't go through, we will make it work. I always have and I always will. And, um, seed is expensive. We all know that. And in order to have a plush golf course in the winter months, you have to overseed. It's a reality out here in the desert, but, um, it's, I don't want to make any excuses, um, but the irrigation we currently have is a setback, but, um, there's always a way in my mind.
Thank you, JJ. I just really wanted to bring attention to that because that's one of the biggest of our community is we're right here on the river and people come out here to golf. And there are a lot of people that live here that golf across the river because the golf courses are different. And I remember when our golf course was like that. And so, and it's coming along and it is changing and it is, it is improving and it's becoming more beautiful. And that also is going to attract more people to play and make more money for the course.
Mr. Mayor, uh, if I might add, and I'll call this the JJ effect. And that is during the month of January, we had a thousand more golfers play during January compared to January last year. And that brought in 24,613 dollars more. Now, when you add the golf cart to being able to handle more people, that's why I have the comfort with overhead.
Thank you. Other questions for JJ? Yeah, go ahead.
JJ, a couple of things, uh, for one, where it shows, uh, the fee structure, the, the exhibit A there, um, the May 16th through October 30th, the adjustable rates, that's, that's basically going to, it's dealing with the heat and everything. And I'm guessing that you're going to be the one that'll put out deals there. Is that correct?
Correct.
During, okay, all right. Another question is, uh, um, piggybacking off, uh, Councilman Campbell, have we, and I'm not a fan, but have we looked into paint over overseeding and how would you feel on that?
I have, um, to be honest, that's one of the first things I did mention to, I am really good friends with, uh, Simplot Partners rep, who is an ex superintendent. He's an expert on grass and he's the one actually brought it up to me with, with our irrigation system. Um, he said you have to get a great Bermuda base in the summertime, which I am more confident I can. And if you do have a great Bermuda base in the fairways, he said you can paint. It looks great. Um, it doesn't look fake at all, but, um, it's very expensive too. So we won't be saving that much more money doing it that way, but it will look better in my mind. Um, we are obviously still going to oversee the greens and the tee boxes, but I'm talking fairways alone. If you do paint, I've played a few golf courses that have done that and it looks great. It looks like real grass. So that is an option. Um, I have the seed order tentatively in place already for the fall, so just in case. But that still is an option that we can talk about, um, next council meeting. I could put it on the agenda. Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah. I wanted to get your, I, I played a few golf courses this winter that had paint on them and I, I thought they looked great. The only, the only problem is your shoes are a little green afterwards, but that's no big deal. Um, okay. Well, that's, that's actually great to hear. Uh, another thing, and I, I discussed this with you earlier. And this is just playing on a marketing scheme here. We want to raise it $3, which I agree, uh, there's, there's no reason, there, uh, we have a lot of reasons, I should say, to raise rates with everything just being outrageous nowadays. And you talked about equipment, you talked about all the, all the overhead. But on a marketing scheme, what would you think about instead of raising our 18-hole rates to 40, you raise those to 39 and make that dollar up at the, uh, at the local rate maybe and raise that from 32 to 33? I know as a golfer, if I ever go out of town and golf and we're looking at golf courses, if there's a very nice golf course that's 49 and one that's 40 or 41 and it's not as nice, I might choose the 49 one, but it's a, it's such a mental thing when you see the below the next tenth of a number. Um, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. Um, either way, we're still about 20 to 25% less than our competitors in the tri-state area. So there is some wiggle room that we have. Um, being the cheapest in the area isn't always not the worst idea. It is attract good deals. It attracts people looking to save money, uh, which is an advantage to our point. So, um, I'm not opposed to that. Um, obviously that 37 rate is about 80% of our golfers. So that's a good chunk of our portion of our revenue. So that's why I really wanted to increase that rate, if not just that rate alone, just because that is such our bread and butter golf rate. So I am not opposed to $39. It does sound a lot better than 40.
Okay. One more question on the needles resident rate. Is that only needles resident or is that tri-state?
No. Yeah, that, that rate was established, um, because there is a general fund subsidy, uh, that's provided to the golf course. And so it was trying to recognize, uh, the needles residents that provide that general fund subsidy.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not available outside.
Okay. So, so you wouldn't be opposed to going from 40 to 39 and then the resident rate going from 32 to 33? You would, you would, would you, would you think that's going to lose you money or, or not?
Um, if you look at the year long, yeah, it might, just because we do so many more rounds at that higher rate. Um, but I get where you're coming from. I understand the logistics of it as far as a marketing standpoint. 39, I guess, it does sound a lot better than 40, even though it is $1. Uh, but I'm not opposed to that at all.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, JJ. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I had a question. I know you're planning to get, uh, some of those trees taken care of that have been, uh, that have died. Uh, I'm wondering if you're planning to replace trees with, with younger trees? And if you are, if you consider maybe having a memory trees put in. This is the Johnson tree or this is the pageant tree or, uh, system idea.
I like that.
It's a good idea.
I do too. Um, I don't know if you guys know, but, um, we've had three of our members that have been golfing at Nibbers Edge for over 20 years and they passed away over the past year due to COVID. So that is a great idea. Um, we have a lot of people that we all know in the community that did love golf, loved our golf course in particular. And that's just a way for us to show our appreciation. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Excuse me, your honor, I believe we have to open the public.
No, oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Yes, please. Was there any public opinion anyone like to speak on this, Mayor?
Before a motion, JJ, uh, I just, I'm, I'm discussion, council discussion here. I want to say, uh, you're doing an awesome job, man. You are.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm not surprised at all with the, with the higher numbers. Uh, yeah, yeah. And thank you. Thank you. So, yeah.
No, thank you. Thank you all for that. Thank you all for accepting me. Uh, it's great to see smiling faces come through those doors. Absolutely.
Can we discuss? And, well, no, there's, uh,
You can make the motion. I think anyone can make a motion.
Okay. I just don't want to take money out of this, uh, money out of the.
You know, I tell you what, it'll be a good, um,
Starting?
Yeah, because we could.
We could change it again.
Next year.
Okay. Yeah.
So it's not going to.
Okay, then JJ is going to make it up. Oh, okay. All right. I, I believe in you, JJ. All right. I like to make a motion, um, with the amendment to change the 18-hole daily green fee from 40 to 39 and the needles resident fee from 32 to 33. But will that be good? Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah. Can I ask one question before we vote?
Yeah. Yeah.
No, we don't have a corporate rate. So the city doesn't have a corporate rate for their city employees?
Uh, the city has, uh, in its labor agreements, a, uh, $5 per employee.
Wait a second.
Uh, we have gone to BNSF and we've gone to, uh, other, um, company or other companies and tried to establish one and haven't been successful. Uh, JJ in there had touched on in the early marketing information, talked about going to the hotels and giving them a special rate depending upon how many new customers they can send us. Then they could turn around and market those packages like a $100 stay-in golf.
Like?
Hotel and golf.
We do have a motion made by, uh, Councilmember Evans, second by Councilmember Long. Make a call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt? Yes.
Lawn maker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, JJ.
Thank, thank you. And just, just real quick, um, uh, future, uh, future meetings, uh, the membership rates before the fiscal year begins or ends, I should say, that'll be on an agenda. Um, memberships went through the roof this year, which is great. But we just need to really look at the rates and see about where we can capture, um, more revenue that way. So I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, JJ.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar considered to be a rock team and will be enacted by one motion and a firm listing. And may or any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action approval items four through 11 on the consent calendar by a firm of your vote called vote. They then will pull an item.
Your honor?
Yes.
I would like to pull item number, uh, seven for discussion and that's it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the rest. I'll move to approve, move to, to pull. Sorry, move to approve. Okay. I moved to approve four through 11 excluding seven.
I'll second it.
Here, a motion by Councilmember, um, Campbell, a second by, um, Councilmember Merritt, a call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Lawn maker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item seven. Award Phillips evacuation for a bid in the amount of $63,000 to perform cleanup of abandoned services along Reclamation Road utilizing the Cal, uh, using the Cal Recycle Grant Funds and authorize staff to issue a notice of reward and notice to proceed. Staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, approximately a year ago, we had, um, what is classified as an illegal dump down along the Burlington Railroad rail line. Caught on fire. And we were very concerned about, obviously the fire there, but a wasteful treatment plant is nearby. Uh, there's, uh, other facilities nearby, plus it could have been, you know, a raging fire. Uh, so, um, good work of, uh, in partnership with our state and our, and their fire partners that was able to be put out. Um, we, about that time, received a grant from, uh, Cal Recycles, uh, which funds, uh, illegal dump cleanups. Uh, we nominated that, gave them a budget about what it would cost and they funded it. And we want to be able to get that, uh, uh, dump cleaned up. The, we sought quotes, um, Phillips Excavation Local Company, uh, was the only one that submitted a proposal and it was $63,000. Uh, our recommendation is to approve that. The, uh, the balance of the money, uh, will be used, uh, as counselors have requested signage at all of the beaches and roadways that go out into the desert without no illegal dumping. Uh, pick up your litter, uh, pack out what you pack in, uh, a number of things like that.
Make sure the fines are up on those signs too, so they understand what it costs.
Uh, we are going to, on the roads leading to where this illegal, uh, dumping occurred down on between Smith Road and Ice Plant Road, which that was barriers where it's physically impossible, uh, to, to get down there. Now, this is open country, so, uh, that is, we're not able to control it.
Are they going to clean it out? The big, that's the old, we're talking about the old ice plant trench, right? That runs up to.
Yes.
That's a big one.
Yeah.
We have tires, we have
The other two.
TVs, uh,
Couches.
Looking at some security, uh, in that area to be able to catch, uh, the next round of illegal operators. And then we've had to, uh, expand staff time to, uh, write the grant, to advertise for the bids, to, it'll probably be, uh, we'll have to turn in a, uh, an expenditure report for, on the reimbursement of the grant. Uh, it is all designed to break even, but we are able to spend some money on getting those additional signage. Uh, and hopefully we'll have a little leftover for, uh, illegal operations that just happened. We had somebody dump a bunch of produce behind bashes the other night. There's, there's cost involved. Anyway, um, so that's our staff report. I'd be glad to answer your question.
Probably behind Monterey is getting bad as well.
Your honor?
Yes. Um, first of all, I'd like to request, uh, the, you know, the documentation back to us exactly with that 12,500 is spent on. And second, um, this has been brought up before about a, I guess, so-called a marshal. I think we've brought this up before. I think this is a perfect example of why we could maybe hire a full-time marshal. When stuff is done like this, they could be out there and make sure people weren't dumping in there. Uh, go help out with the truck parking, go help out with the illegal dumping, go help out with the Jack Smith, uh,
Park.
After hours parks, yes. Yeah, a full-time, uh, I know for a fact that, I know, uh, several law enforcement officers, when they have great retirement packages and they get to get out of there early, but they're always looking for something that, that needs insurance. These are insurers to keep going and we can pick up one of them guys that retired from somewhere and um, I, I, I think this is a, a perfect example. Or a city marshal. Yes, yes, exactly. Yes. Yeah. So, um,
A great grandpa.
I wasn't in the right place to talk about that, but.
So I, I will return with an itemization of that 12,500. And then the second thing is, uh, I will develop for council's consideration, the marshal.
Okay.
Concept for, for them during the budget. All right.
We'll get our sign, your honor, and we'll get our signs. One of the, one of the things that a lot of people don't understand is that we have to have the signs up in order to enforce them. So if the sign is not up, that says.
Or is incorrect.
Yeah, the, the fine is this much if you do this. If we can't have anyone enforce it, it's because it's not posted. So that's why it's really important. Yeah. So we want those signs up saying how much it costs because we, we want Ross to haul their butts in.
Your honor.
Give them tickets. They're throwing their, and Dave, throwing their garbage on the ground.
Rick, um, did, did the city have to go and clean up that mess behind bashes the other day?
Uh, we did, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
All right. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Give a motion, my Councilmember Campbell, a second by Councilmember Long. You go with item seven approval. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Longaker?
Yes.
Thank you.
End of consent calendar, regular items discussion regarding extending the contract with 3D Networks as the city's IT consultant. Advertise for a request for proposal. Staff report.
Good evening again, Sylvia Milette, Finance Department. The city currently has a contract for information technology services with 3D Networks, as some of you may know. We've had this contract since December of two thousand eighteen. Those IT services include the operation, maintenance, and installation of PCs, application software, client server-based information systems, maintaining the networks and information in, in the city offices and council chambers and the offsite locations, also troubleshooting of all computer-level applications, software programs, and et cetera. And 3D also maintains the city's website contract. Currently, their rate is fifty dollars an hour, which comes out on an average for the last three years has been a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. It's a little over the contract term, which ended in December two thousand eighteen, so it's currently on a month-to-month basis. And we are seeking council direction to extend the contract currently or to go out for RFP, so extending the contract with 3D.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we looked at a number of different options, including hiring someone inside. I, I've worked in organizations that have internal IT staff. This is such a fast-changing environment that my experience in previous positions was that the IT person was a train all the time, especially when it's a one-person show. The second is, we have developed familiarity that the current consultant has with our equipment. They're basically the design system that's in operation. Third concern I have would be that in our area, our options are pretty limited in the number of firms that can provide a full service of information technology services. And we also surveyed employees about, were they satisfied with the service? Because most of the users are intern city employees. And if I could summarize it, it was a general satisfaction. There were a couple of issues that people raised. One was a customer, the need for a greater customer service attitude of help. Because oftentimes. I'm, I'm so stupid sometimes that I get an eye roll because there's an ape simply answered and I, and I, I don't, I don't have it. But it, it works. So there was some concern about, you know, a greater emphasis with, for customer service. And then I've also had, well, I'll let the council raise her issue, but it's, it's security. Of all the options available to us, bring it in-house, rebid it, or extend the contract, I feel very comfortable that we have the right person doing this. And my recommendation would be to extend the contract for three years. You should also be aware that we are going to be shifting away from Apple products and going to Microsoft-based products. So the iPads will be doing a switch out over the next year. I've got a pilot program going on with Long. We will take those old iPads and repurpose those in the organization because they're good for field investigations, for taking notes, and for photographing violations and situations. And I think that the, the Microsoft product, which is similar, I mean, it's nearly identical, but it will work better with the pack, the agenda pack. Because it comes out in Microsoft, has to get converted to Apple, and in the process sometimes it's smooth and sometimes it's not. So we're looking at maybe some changes there, but my recommendation is to move forward in three years.
Thank you. Discussion by the council?
I know that, well, right now, we're in the process of doing a, a new website, which is really exciting because that's what I thought that we should have, especially someplace where we have our events for the Friends of Elgarces, the museum, for the visitor's center, the Chamber of Commerce, or anyone else that, I don't care if it's the Elks Lodge, whoever wants to put information, we are not cohesive. And we have people that send us things all the time, thank you. We get sent things into, to us to put on our Facebook. So we're passing things around Facebook among our community, but we now are working towards a website where we can have our functions available to anyone who wants to look them up. And we did have a situation last year where after the city of Kingman was breached, a big, huge security problem, that our IT guy was right on top of everything. Our iPads were taken from us, they were taken in, things were changed, things were done, and security was beefed up and changed out, keeping us protected. So that was, that was very quick, you know, he's right on top of things. So I, I'm really pleased with everything that we have. And, and my big concern was like, just trying to find any kind of help like that in my own business around here, it's impossible. And to have someone who knows us inside and out, it's like changing doctors. It's like, you know, you get familiar, you don't want to have to take someone your whole medical history all over again. We have our own internal city history and we have someone who knows it and someone who is willing, you know, that is willing to stay on with us. So to, I don't know, do we, is this going to be changing the cost to us or just extending the contract at this point?
My attempt would be to extend the contract as is.
Okay.
Thank you all. Councilmember Merritt?
My comments, I, I, I do echo the concerns of the, of the staff. And I do say that I have noticed just from, on my end, from the little bit that I have, I have noticed some security issues and things that are just like weaker spots, I think, and with the whole, with the cyber attacks and everything that could be coming down the pipeline, it's a major concern. However, I do echo Ellen's comments. I, I think they do a good job. I think that it's good because he knows us inside and out. I would just hope, I just hope that like, you know, maybe security gets a little bit tighter on some of the things. But other than that, I, I think it's, he's doing a pretty good job. And it's fiscally more responsible, I feel, to stick with them than to bring in a whole another, like a whole department full of people.
Thank you, Councilmember Longaker.
With our meters going online, is his IT going to be the one that's doing that as well?
Yes and no. We have, as part of the automatic metering system, which should start installation next month for water and electric, all the meters throughout the city that would be electronically transferred into the city. The consultant who's doing that work bears the responsibility for the sending of the data and then, and then setting up the receiver of that data. But then at that point, it shifts to our own about how we use that data. And Dan has been working in that process with Randy from the get-go.
That's what I thought. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, council, any public opinion on this matter?
I'm Judith Thornton, and I felt compelled to get up and say this. Couple weeks ago, I talked to Dan about being involved in the city websites tourism section because it is, it's really not organized well. I would like to see it done in a schedule of events, Route sixty-six, interest in places and place of interest. A lot that's on that tourism page is incorrect. I didn't mean that originally, but it is sort of all over the place. It needs to be condensed a little bit, it's too long. But anyway, I did get the okay from the city manager to go ahead and do that. Dan was going to unveil the page and the resources he has. So I would like to be involved in that tourism thing. I do that, I do the tourism page and there's so much. When I go to the city, I go to the city website to see what's going on. I go to a chamber page to see what's going on. There really isn't a whole lot on there. Yours are very much on the city website. So that needs to be, we need to increase our visiting numbers here, and we have significantly by what we've done for the last almost two years. But we have to get out there, the city having that on their website would go a long way to bringing more visitors in here. And I am willing to volunteer to submit information to Dan if we can work together and revamp that tourism part of that a little bit.
Can you get a ball and change?
Careful what you wish for.
Thank you.
This is, this was supposed to be unveiled next week, but this is the new week.
We got a vote.
So in it, Patrick, it goes, you'll see across, not the top menu, but the lower one, all the meetings and agendas will be posted, any jobs. We've had a numerous request to be able to pay your utility bill or whatever online. There will be also a list of all upcoming meetings. There is, and then those who are inquiring about cannabis businesses, but this will, that last one will rotate for retail recruitment or home building and a lot. As we scroll down through here, there's background about the city, obviously, our, our railroad heritage. Then the next section down is, and these will rotate. It will be, what does each department do? And so that will rotate, so you'll be able to contact individual departments. And then again, here's out by itself, the meeting agendas, and the minutes will be posted in there as well. And, and then this is the page that Judy was just talking about. We added a upcoming events. So we need to set some, some rules about who can post or who can send and what we will, what we will post, but the idea is create a community count. So if the, the gem finder club, or the quilting club, or the Chamber of Commerce, or the off-roaders, or the remote-controlled floaters want, then they'll be able to submit. And then let me just scroll down, and then I'm almost done, is, this will be an area, obviously, for the golf course and will connect into their, hopefully, reservation system, but also other new news articles, press releases, items like that. So this is unveiled a little early, but we should be fully operational on this.
That's awesome.
And this is a great attempt.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
When I asked for this section of having a, a page where we could post things, this is just for posting. This is not for people to.
Right.
They have to send it in and then it has to be posted on. Okay, I just want to make sure that, because we weren't, we're not trying to create Facebook.
No, no, and, and the old, my, my concern that we, that I need to work with the city attorney on is, is it open to private nonprofits? Yes, other governmental agencies? Yes. But. The American Nazis? Well, see that, and I just need to work with the city attorney is, if we make it open to everybody, then it, everybody.
Does it benefit the city? Does it benefit the city?
Well, but, but I need to work with John to make sure that we, as we get, as we do this, that we find whom.
Correct.
And stay within constitutional limitations.
Okay, John. It's gonna be your job.
Yeah, I'm happy to work with Rick on.
Thank you so much. You do a great job.
Okay. Any other public appearance? Yes, please.
Nina Tucker, forty-one oh one Wetmore. When I worked in the business environment, when we had a problem like this, because I see this as being a reoccurring issue you're gonna have next year is, should we continue the contract? And whenever we had to contract out any of our work, we, and our in-house people didn't know that type of work, they always accompanied that person on the repair, on the maintenance, whatever that, that outsourced person was doing, the in-house person was with them. So, you know, to avoid having to readdress this issue year after year, and personally, I find it much more better to have this type of thing in-house, at least have somebody in-house available for emergencies, for downage, for whatever is there that you don't have to send out to, to somebody else. And perhaps this person can even be trained or given an internship to achieve a better, you know, as they learn and become. And they can know your system even better than the people that you outsource to. So perhaps, I've always found there's more than one way to skin a rabbit. And perhaps doing a little bit of both, renegotiating this contract in a manner where you can pay somebody to start maybe at a very small amount, a quarter or so of the amount you're paying now, and cut back, cut back on the outsourced and give somebody an opportunity, especially somebody of, from Needles, which would be a very wonderful thing. So that was just my idea, my experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public appearance? If not, I'll return to the council for deliberation and motion.
I'm gonna move that we extend the contract.
Three years?
There is a motion by Councilmember Campbell, seconded by.
Three years.
What?
Three years.
Oh, a three-year.
That's our statement.
Extension of the contract and a second by Councilman Longaker. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, and I'm gonna say I do not hate that idea, yes.
Yes.
Longaker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys report.
Thanks, Sylvia.
Would you like me to begin?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, just briefly, some of the matters that we've been handling for the city in the recent past include the ongoing matter Rio Buena Vista, the litigation involving Rio Buena Vista, also representing the city in connection with about, still about twenty-five receivership and code enforcement cases. And we continue to advise the city on land use matters, live scans, almost on a, probably a weekly basis, reviewing live scans to see if people qualify under our ordinance to work in the cannabis industry in the city. And then advising the city on sequoia matters as needed, reviewing contracts, and also assisting the city with Public Records Act requests. And we, not long ago, prepared a notice to terminate the lease with Amtrak. And then we also have worked on a, a draft proposed ordinance to change the cannabis cultivation tax from a square foot tax, or from a percentage tax to a, tax to a square foot tax. And I think that's everything. And I think that's everything I have this evening to report on.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
City manager's report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, first of all, we had a household hazardous waste, uh electronic waste collection uh day on March fifth. Uh, we had thirty parties, thirty participants, and uh they brought in three thousand one hundred nineteen pounds of flammable liquids, paints, aerosols, roofing tar, antifreeze, motor oils, sharks, needles, uh CDs or TVs, things like that. Uh, which is impressive. Uh, the, the good news is that the previous year we collected five thousand pounds, which means that the backlog of what people have in their garage is getting cleaned up. So, and the good news is that this stuff isn't going into landfill or dumped along the highway. And uh it's best for the environment. I wanted to bring this up earlier and I, I held off and that is we're awarded today uh as part of our grant response program, an award of seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars uh to do phase one of the new irrigation system at the golf course. So we will be able to, uh, the overall cost is probably twice this amount. As what we do with this is there'll be a
It's a ball roll on it.
Plan put together for what the new irrigation system will look like. And uh then we will invest in hardware as far as we can. Uh, the next round of grants are due April fifteenth. Uh, Rainy is hard at work on, with JJ to get that second phase of this. Um, and we were able to show that we would cut our water use approximately forty percent by using an automated system rather than this nineteen sixties vintage system.
Our night waters.
Right. Uh, plus it's very, uh, we expect it to save money, not only in the use of water, but we expect to save money in terms of labor because this is on Mac, you don't have to go out and put the sprinklers in individually. Would you put up the sign, please? While that's happening, I'm gonna remind people that on the twenty-sixth of March, that we have our Needles Pride Neighborhood Cleanup, where we will have uh roll-off boxes at Nicky Bunch on Safari and ninety-five, the Public Works Yard on Roboffo, uh North K and thirty-four twenty Needles Highway for people that are cleaning up, cleaning out further the stuff that accumulated over uh in their garages. Um, this went out as part of everybody's utility bill last month. Uh, on your screen is a sign, part of the Clean California Program uh that was announced. Uh, or the gateway signs. This is the sign that will be at Five Mile Road. Uh, those letters, I believe, are about thirty foot high. The bear is, I think the bear is thirty foot high. So, and then they're going to raise the platform upon which those concrete letters are uh up off around about thirty feet. So this is going to be truly a monument. And so this is an artist rendering about what that uh intersection interchange uh will look like. The uh, the second part of it was, we met with uh the Clean California folks and they're doing uh proposing five million dollars of re-landscaping and art in public places at the three interchanges in town. So those will all be re-landscaped and I keep envisioning additional. Yeah, I can't.
I'm envisioning inviting on-ramps.
Right. Well, you know, like when you get up to, you go up ninety-five and you get to uh Interstate eleven where they've got those art. I mean, that's, I'm visualizing something like that, but um they're, they're at work with designers and landscapers. And then, of course, the third part of the Clean California was the two point two million dollars for the person-sized beach uh part. Um, we are working with the sheriff's office when Prop sixty-four allowed adult use marijuana. Uh, it also uh established a twenty-five dollars per square foot tax uh at state level. Um, that money is diverted into a, some to highway patrol, some to uh research uh biological research on attacking humans and how, for example, how to detect driving on the influence of cannabis. Uh, but also their influence, a thirty-four million dollar uh pot of money that was created to fund supplemental law enforcement for those communities that allow cannabis. We're one of those. There were thirty-four communities in the state that averaged many dollars a year from that funding source. Uh, we're working with uh the local sheriff's office and their central office about putting together a plan on how a million dollars of supplemental law enforcement would be used. Uh, a couple ideas uh that have been bounced around are a school resources officer. Uh, a sworn officer in schools to work with kids. We used to have that. Uh, we haven't had that in quite a while. Um, there, uh, we've, we've tried a number of different things, but I think maybe what worked before might work again. Uh, we're also looking at and of course, you will have final say in what this program looks like. Uh, is a, an anti-drug uh use uh program i- in the school to advise kids on the dangers of using products meant for adults. Uh, is it?
Can it be put to putting more boots to the ground?
Of course. And then uh maybe it's another maybe it covers the cost of, of another debt or an existing debt. And so anyway, the uh last year, um, so we're, we're trying to get ourselves qualified. And we're, you have to be a community that allows cannabis in order to access this money and we qualify on that grounds. Um, we were notified uh because we put a pay demand on the Sarda property behind the Bash's uh grocery store where the former Bash's was uh that he needs to uh deposit the money and pay us or uh relinquish the property. He's decided to relinquish the property. So we will be posting that property for, say, uh, now, remember the the proceeds of that goes to the state, which then distributes it to all the underlying taxing business as part of the, because it was owned by the former RDA. Uh, we would get about uh close to three hundred thousand dollars out of a million too. It was, uh, that property was being sold for. So we will do invite proposals and uh, and, and bring that forward. Then uh also, as was mentioned earlier, I did notify Amtrak that due to um health and safety concerns, uh, security of the Algarssus Building, that we had found that the experiment of having the Amtrak waiting room uh hasn't worked uh as we hoped it would. Uh, we've had severe acts of serious violence, vandalism, including uh starting a fire, spending the night uh inside, holes punched in the wall, doors uh pried open. Uh, so I notified them that Amtrak that we were going to terminate the lease. We had a conversation with Amtrak. Amtrak uh said they agreed as a pilot program to do that, to allow us to close. Uh, they would uh, they are reviewing all of their waiting areas because they've shifted to a program where when the train is fifteen minutes out, they send ticketed passengers a text saying it's time to go fly. So uh there are, continue to be about seven hundred and fifty to nine hundred passengers a month that embark and just embark off Amtrak here at midnight. But the Amtrak waiting area has become, so it is locked right now. Will stay locked and will track whether that's adversely affecting Amtrak passengers. Um, I, uh, we did have a, a violent act of vandalism down at Jack Smith Park involving the destruction of a, of an electric pedestal um that feeds the electrical outlets at the large cabana uh that uh was destroyed by uh six individuals. We are working with the sheriffs. They're conducting an investigation. We filed a criminal complaint. The cost to replace, which is underway right now, is about forty-five, four thousand five four thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. And anything over four hundred becomes felony vandalism. We have a code for that. So uh we are working with the sheriff's office and uh we, we think we know and, but at the same time, we don't want for minors and even those who just turned eighteen. We don't want to harm the future by getting hit with a felony at seventeen. Although it's, it's serious. And I went through a rant the next morning about why it is stealing from your friends and your neighbors because we now have to spend their money to replace that. So and the other part I said, quit breaking my stuff. Quit graffiti, quit destroying stuff. And the last thing I would add is when they kicked and knocked this pedestal over, it was a two forty volt uh electrical connection. They're lucky it didn't blow up. They're lucky that when the spark started flying because of all the exposed wires, that the ground wasn't wet or else it would be going to fuel the system. And so we're, we're taking this serious. Um I've asked for uh an admission of guilt. I've asked for eighty hours of community service. Uh, there is a fine of um one thousand dollars per perpetrator. There is a shared cost for the four thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. And because there was underage drinking, uh I've worked with Center for Change to have a six-session alcohol awareness uh program. So uh without going, I, obviously the names aren't necessary, but uh I have found the students to be remorseful. Apologetic, I received an apology today. And willing to do what's necessary to get this behind. And I think lesson learned. One, had his daughter research what vandalism is and in her paper write what the penalty is for. And she and her dad were shocked that how serious this is and can be. So I think the message is there, at least for these six of them. So uh with that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. If you'd like answering questions an hour after me.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Um, yes, thank you, Your Honor. Um, thank you, Rick. I am totally impressed of how you handled that situation. And thank God we are not mourning. Um, I want to thank the city for their participation in responsible disposal. We had March fifth and March twelfth. The fifth was, was the um, the electronics batteries. I mean, I save all my batteries in a plastic bag in the house and then take these things. Uh, the old computers and things we can't throw in the trash, TVs. And then on March twelfth, we had the second date that uh we put out there for people to come and dispose of things um down there. So that it was really well articulated. Now we've got this third one. So we're really working together on doing that. And I want to thank Adrian for his hard work in going out and, you know, notifying people and letting them know that they've got to clean up their yards. They've got to get rid of the trash that's sitting in front of their house for weeks or months or they just, you know, it's a, it's a really thankless job where, you know, Adrian catches a lot of crap from a lot of people and a lot of complaints, but you know, I want to thank you for doing your job. Uh, there's, you know, it's just nice to see our city um to clean up like that. Um, is um Amtrak at all interested in putting a guard of their own or someone manned in there? Is that something that they've ever talked about? Just, we can talk about that later, but that just came to my mind just now. Yeah, yes, where they would do that. And then um this property behind Bash's that you just mentioned that is going to come back to us. Um, is there, we have that problem with the restaurant and trucks and stuff. Is this, is, is this a feasible uh resolution for that restaurant to be able to have parking back there for people to use their restaurant if they were interested in that? Or is that something that could not happen?
Well, it, uh, we're required, the old, the former redevelopment agency body. And we're under orders to dispose of property by the end of this year, by the end of this calendar year. And we thought we had it disposed of by selling to this guy. He now was backed out. So if we don't sell it, then the state will take it.
And sell it.
And sell it.
And then sell it. And we get nothing.
And, yeah.
So we need to sell it.
Right.
To somebody.
So if, if the restaurateur wants to purchase it, uh, then they should submit a proposal. Uh, I continue to work with them to try and get them to reduce things. That's now lease that restaurant space.
Did not work out. Well, maybe you could put a bug in your ear
Yeah.
about this property and that might solve the problem with the trucks for the sheriff's department, for the highway, for people in and out, uh for the walls getting knocked down and all the other things that go along with that. And then the only other thing that I wanted to just bring up um because I'm working on it and um I want to, um, I want the city, I would like to have the city work on it, is looking into going, and you've had conversations, is going into a Home Key system uh doing the project Home Key. And that's where uh they, they, there is a sixty million dollar grant where they will do twenty-eight thousand dollars a unit to take something like a motel and revamp every single room into something. And this has to do with housing homeless people. So finding a property in place or whatever, trying to move the people who are homeless out of downtown into a place where they can live. And it's a feasible thing. They did it up in Big Bear. Uh, there is someone who is interested in using their property to do that here in this town. And so it's just something that I'd like us to look into, to explore. And I know that you have already had conversations with a lot of people on this. So I did not come in on top of this, but I am, my phone's ringing off the hook the whole time in Hawaii. I was working on that one. So I want to officially look into it and see what we can do to start our first project with homeless and um putting, getting them somewhere where they live not in front of the museum or at the Algarssus in a tent. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Evans?
I don't have anything, Your Honor.
Just the rodeo's coming up, uh, April first and second. Yeah, is that right? First and second? Yes. And that, that's gonna be exciting and that's all I have. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I just have a couple things. Um, Saturday's gonna be a hundred degrees. I, I want to start on that beach on Jack Smith and get it cleared. So when it's a hundred and fifteen outside, we have a new beach to use. And other than that, I'd just like to say condolences to a couple of
And other than that, I'd just like to say condolences to a couple of local families. This last week, the Costas Walker family lost a couple. Condolences and condolences to the McCaffin and Lamone family today, they lost. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have, be attending the city council conference in Lake Huron, April 7th and 8th. I understand, Councilmember Campbell will also be attending, I believe, will also be attending a very good meeting for Needles. And with that, our adjournment, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.